Most of the reason, the rationale for the discussion thus far today with the financials and the rate studies and system development fees and whatnot really have led up to this presentation on the wastewater treatment plant replacement project. This is a project that has been in the works and talked about for well over a decade and has at times been delayed for various economic reasons. When you start a project like this and you make projections on what future wastewater treatment capacity is going to be needed over a 10-year period, you know, that continues to have to be refined over time. But we are coming up on a time period now that we, we in the city of Monroe are needing to make a decision on the project to go forward or not. The project is, is it what, over 70%?
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent. Sixty percent on its design. This is a real critical time in the design process for decisions to be made. It will impact how the rest of the design is put together and then, of course, the most importantly, the final cost. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott Clark. We will introduce the consultants that have been working on this project. And once we receive this information, then we will need to see where we are in terms of making some decisions on this project and things related to the system. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Good afternoon again, everyone. In June of 2022, Hazen and Sawyer was, had been hired by the city and they had completed a preliminary engineering review and looked at what the wastewater plant expansion would need to consist of for a 3 million gallon capacity design. And then through a successful request for qualifications process, we had selected Hazen and Sawyer to proceed with the design of the 3 million gallon expansion. In June of '23, Mr. Jim Strube from Hazen and Sawyer had presented to the council and the public enterprise committee as well, a strategic meeting, what the preliminary engineering findings revealed, what they had determined what the design would look like potentially for 3 million gallon expansion, along with the engineers' estimated cost at that time. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Strube. He is flown all the way in from Nevada to provide the presentation this morning, or this afternoon, I'm sorry. And this project management team as well as Mike Parker in the back. Mike can just stand up and then Brandon Mares has been involved as well. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over and if you have any questions, we'll hold them towards the meeting, please.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for having us this afternoon. We're very, very thankful and grateful to work on this very critical project for the city of Monroe. Again, just my, again, my name is Jim Strube. I work for Hazen and Sawyer. We just introduced my colleagues back there. For a project of this size and this magnitude, we have a lot of people working on it, from process engineers to structural engineers to architects to plumbers, whatever, every discipline you can imagine, like CO9C. So it's a, it's a big project. Just a little bit about Hazen too, just I know everybody is excited to be here at 2:00 in the afternoon talking about wastewater treatment. So that's, that's one thing. So hopefully I can keep you away, keep you engaged, but really to be informative, to give you guys the information they need so they can make the best decisions going forward for your community and your constituents. We have been very, very fortunate over the last five to 10 years just to be really engaged in most of the local communities here when it comes to wastewater treatment and capacity expansions and upgrades. We, in the process of right now, working or in construction of a $300 million project for the city of Charlotte, their brand new wastewater treatment plant. And I'm saying some of these things because I understand that cost is a big component right here. And I wanted to provide you a little background and information about where our cost numbers came from. We just didn't get them out of there. These are all cost numbers. We've also have expanded the plant over at Fort Mound. That was a $50 million project a few years ago. We're working on a $300 million project over at Rock Hill right now, plus another $100 million, plus we're completing a $90 million project for Rock Hill. So I say all these things not to brag about Hazen and Sawyer, but just to give you enough information to know that we have been doing this and working with the local contractors and regional contractors and national contractors, that the numbers that we are presenting today are real numbers. And to also give you the perspective that this is a great area. People are flocking here and people will continue to flock here and this community will grow. And so you need that capacity, one way or the other, or else it's going to be grabbed by other people in the surrounding area. So here's the outline for today. I'm just going to give you a real, real brief overview of your treatment process. We're going to look at what drives these capacity expansions and again, it's basically population. We're going to, I'm going to provide you a little bit of history and the drivers about this project. Mr. Watson mentioned before that this project has been talked about for 10 years. I could say it's been talked about probably for 25 years because I started working on this plan back in the 1990s and actually did a design back in the late 1990s to expand the plant that was in Shell, okay? We'll talk about that. And then we'll go over some of the site plans and some of the options that we explore. And we'll talk about the cost and we'll talk about some value engineering that we did to try to reduce the cost and get within your budget. And again, that's not unique in itself either. Costs always come in high, especially at this 30%, 60% level, and we always have to step back and say, okay, how can we give you what you need in your available funding, your available budget, if that makes sense? I will also then present some area costs of recent wastewater treatment plant expansions and upgrades, just so you can see that again, this is not unique. This is not even unique to North Carolina. This is unique throughout the country. Hazen does plants for New York City, for Miami-Dade, for LA Water and Power, for the city of San Francisco. We are all seeing these accelerated costs of construction that are putting, that are crippling available budgeting and funding. So again, not unique, it's not justifiable, but it's, or whether it's justifiable or not, I'm just saying it's just not unique. So here's an aerial view of your wastewater treatment plant. What's neat about this is that this is a brand-new asset that just went into place. This is your new 15 million gallon flow equalization facility. So there's a lot of discussion about INI. And this actually helps to attenuate your flow into your plant so you can pass it through and treat it at your treatment plant. So this is 15 million gallons. It was actually placed in service, what, Brandon, three weeks ago?
A little over that, probably.
Maybe a month or so ago, where there was a big storm coming in. We actually had to go get that permit to operate it from the state because of the storm was coming in. It did a great job. It basically allowed you not to have any overflows at your plant. In the foreground, or actually background, is your existing treatment plant. That plant was built and constructed back in the 1960s. So we're coming up on almost 60 years of, of, of an asset that needs to be renewed, that needs to be worked at. Now again, we've worked at plants that are over 100 years old. City of Charlotte's got two of them. Well, getting up there, 1928, I guess it was, two of their plants. But in New York City, a lot of plants too, 80, 90 years old. So again, you get to that point in time where you have to renew some of those existing assets or even just replace the whole thing in totality. So why are we here today and talking about why do we need to expand this plant by 3 million gallons per day? This existing plant that you have right now is, is rated for a plant capacity. The state reads these plans and says that you can't put more than 10.4 million gallons per day in that treatment plant on a maximum month basis, on a, on a 30-day period, okay? On average. Typically, right now, we have approached, we have actually had a maximum month value of 10.6 million gallons per day. And that happened back in January of 2024. So over that 30, 30-day period, January 1st to January 31st, we averaged, or I should say you averaged, or the plant staff averaged 10.6 million gallons per day. Were any violations other than they violated the permit because of flow, because they had to be below 10.4, okay? Now again, the plant can handle more than 10.6 million gallons a day. They can actually handle up to 20, but only on intermittent periods, okay? That's a big distinction. We talk about INI and all the INI coming in. We see those big flows coming in during rainstorm events where we might see 20 NGD come into the plant, 40 NGD come into the plant. But for a sustained treatment to meet our limits, discharging in a receiving water body, we've got to be below that 10.4. So what this graph here is showing is that we have time on the horizontal axis and we got flow on the vertical axis. And what we're doing is that we are projecting based upon the year, 2020, 2020, 2025, all the way up to 2045, what that flow is rising. And flow is proportional to population, okay? It's linear, it's proportional. So as the city grows and more and more people come in, then our flow rate to our wastewater treatment plant is going to increase proportionally. It would be the same thing in our water treatment plant too, your water treatment plant. So what this plan is showing is that we are going to approach our 10.4 NGD capacity somewhere in that, boy, that's hard to see, 10.4, right around 2030, okay? And the state basically says that once you get within 80% of your rated capacity, you are dictated or mandated to start engineering and making plans for that expansion. And at 90%, you've actually got to start construction, okay? And if not, then you can't allow anybody else to go in. That's more or less the bottom line. So that's what's called the 80/90 rule. And so typically on a plant like this, it might take you a couple of years to do an engineering report, do a design, takes you three to six months to bid the project, and then it might take another two or three years to construct it. So we're pushing up on that timeframe right now, right? If we need to have, if we're going to run out of capacity at around 2030. What this has also shown though is that that 3 NGD that's being proposed right now should take you out till, what, 2040, 2040? So that's, that's, what is that, 15 years from now? That 3 NGD expansion now equates to basically 9,000 to 10,000 homes. Multiply that by three, three people per home, that's 30,000 people. That almost doubles the capacity of the city of Monroe. You're at a population right now, I believe around 35,000, 37,000, 38,000? So you're talking about if you can, this 3 NGD expansion will almost double the population, unless you get some sort of industry coming in or commercial, that's really going to be a big, a big demand, all right? I'm just going to stop there for a second. Does that make sense? Any questions on that? Yes?
What you designed, what you designed in the 90s, is it still a viable foundation?
That's a great question. So, you know, I'll give a shout out to the plant and to Scott's predecessor and people that worked there at the plant in the 90s. They did a really very good, great job. They were great stewards of the city's funding and I know those people personally. The question is though, is, is the plant adequate? Yes and no. A lot of the infrastructure is still, the brick and mortar, the basins, the concrete are still in good shape. Some of the equipment is antiquated, needs to be replaced. But the biggest thing is, is that what drives our industry, our president used to say is two things, population and regulation. That what keeps us consultants busy is population, people moving in because that requires expansions of water treatment plants, expansions of wastewater treatment plants. But the second thing is regulation. And the regulations have become more and more stringent over the last 30 years. It used to be that if you could just collect all the wastewater in Central Point, screen it a little bit, take out some of the nasties, discharge it. Now I heard somebody in the hallway say earlier this morning, the solution to pollution is dilution, right? That doesn't fly anymore, but that's the way it was back in the Clean Water Act of 1972 when people did discharge that. I'll get to your answer. Now though, now, now we've got to remove even more pollutants, okay? Now we're concerned about nutrients, ammonia and phosphorus. And the reason being is because if you discharge those in a receiving stream, the streaming can become eutrophic, which means nutrient-rich. And anybody that's ever driven the country grows in North Carolina, Monroe and in Union County will know, you look in a farm pond and what do you see in June, July? You see algae, right? And algae is the detriment to any receiving stream or farm pond because it sucks the oxygen out and kills other aquatic wildlife. So that's why EPA came in and the states come in and now we have to remove that phosphorus and nitrogen. The, the issue with that, and not the issue, is that it costs a lot of money because it creates, you have to build a lot more infrastructure, a lot more treatment basin volume. Does that answer your question? Sort of.
Absolutely.
Okay. And, and back in the day too, we didn't have to do filters, we didn't have to do a lot of disinfection. Now those limits are ratcheted down. So the water that we're discharging to our receiving stream is so much better than what's in our receiving stream right now. And that's why you're seeing people in other municipalities across the country basically using that water instead of discharging it, recycling it back and putting it through a water treatment plant and drinking it, either directly, indirectly, or directly. So I just want to give you a little bit of history about this plant. I mentioned that I had started working on this plant back in mid-'90s and Hazen designed the Influent Pump Station number two. We designed the Aeration Basin number five back in the 1990s. In 1998, 1999, we actually developed, designed documents to expand the plant from, at that time, 9 NGD to 12 and a half NGD. And at that time, your previous director, Russ Popeath, came on board from Arizona and Russ made the correct call at that time. He said, I'm going to defer to this project because you had a local industry that pulled out and they were a big water demand user and a big wastewater treatment to discharge. And at that time, we were up to that point pretty, pretty close, about the same point, 80%. And when that industry left, flows dropped down to like 6 and 1/2 or something to that effect. Does that ring a bell? It was, it was some water user. I want to say like EVAP, but that's not right. I can't remember what it was.
Pallback?
Pallback. Maybe, maybe it was a different process, but, but there was something that the water demand dropped, wastewater dropped. We also had a drought during that time and flows just plummeted. It was, we couldn't justify that, that, that expansion. And I bring that up in, in the sense that since then, since 2000, there's been very little improvement projects at the plant. We replaced some screens, we replaced the blowers, the staff built a new admin building, we replaced some clarifiers. But typically you would think over a 20, typically what we see over a 20-year, 25-year period is that even if plants don't have to expand that plant, usually there's an improvement project. And there wasn't a massive improvement project, which just goes to show that it's due time, that this plant gets a little bit of refreshment. So what we had, what we did then, or what Scott asked us to do is to look at a PBR, you know, basically a preliminary engineering report here in the last couple of years of 2022. And I presented this to city council about a year ago and back in August 2023, by then July 2023, when I presented this. And I, I was before you and I said, hey, today, this could have cost about $100 million. And what I'm showing here is, is, this just looks like a bunch of rectangles and surface bleeding. We've done a lot more work than that. We're just trying to really graphically kind of show you what this process is. But the existing plant, it'll still stay in operation. You're still going to use leverage and utilize your existing assets and that's showing great. The 3 NGD expansion is shown in purple, which shows 13.4. So again, 10.4 plus three is 13.4. Maybe some time after around 2040 to another 3 NGD and that's showing in great. And then eventually, and this, this by 50 years out, eventually the existing plant gets decommissioned and basically you have a brand-new plant. But that's many, many, many years out. What this is showing though is that we're, at this time, we're building two aeration bases, two clarifiers, filters and UV disinfection to base, to, not basically, to treat 3 NGD, but to hydraulically pass 9 million gallons per day. I just want to say something about the previous talk about INI. Every utility has INI. In fact, that's why you design your plant with a certain peaking factor to pass and to accommodate that. Typically, we assume plants have a peaking factor of anywhere from three to four. So City of Raleigh, 60 NGD plant, but they can pass 189 gallons per day through their treatment process. Most plants are that way. The state requires you have to at least pass two and a half times your permitted capacity. So again, it's very, very important to get your INI out, but you, you still got to design your plant to handle that INI, that extraneous water anytime there's a rainfall again. So a year or so ago, we came up with this number, $100 million. We started doing design and we started looking at, looking at grading and interest ways and electrical costs and pump stations and things like that. And we put together an estimate and lo and behold, we're at 140 and we said, whoa, what's going on here? And let me just back up a little bit. That $100 million number that we came up with back in 2023, this number? That number was based upon real numbers that we use for clarifiers, aeration bases, filters of the plant that's being constructed right now today over at Charlotte Water. Those numbers were, the baseline numbers were basically used by, that we got from GARNY and proper construction. So those numbers were real. We believe these numbers were real too, but this is just how things have changed even in a year. Now, a little bit different, it's not just about escalation due to construction, it's also due to grading. One of the things that we met together with staff and we talked about this, we said, okay, what can we do? One of the things, one of the things they talked about, well, do we really need to move the financials road? Do we really need to build these basins right here on top of the hill? Do we really need to have an influent pump station? What can we do to try to reduce the cost and get it within budget? And so we had a meeting, we had all our heads and together in a room, we talked about it. And some of the things that we came up with is, well, if we're not constrained, see where those orange rectangles are at? That's an existing EQ basin. If we can, you know, 30 years from now, build there, then that's going to save some cost. If we can keep our existing interest way in and not do as much grading up on this hill where these other orange bases are at, then again, we can save some costs. If we can retrofit the influent, the existing influent pump station with some new pumps and not have to build a deep, 50-foot deep influent pump station, that's probably what, guys, $39 million ballpark? Then we can shave that off too. And so that's, that's what we're doing. So again, it was getting people in a room, talking about, getting ideas. It was actually something that Rich and Amy came up with. They said, hey, how about some of these ideas? Why don't you explore that? And that's what we did. And so now we believe that we are today, and let me, let me just say this caveat, today we believe the project is worth $100 million. Maybe not worth, it cost $100 million. I said it a year ago and I'll say it again today and maybe you guys will hunt me out in torn feathered view, but none of us know what's going to happen next year or two years or three years from now. And I'll show you a graph, why. The cost today is in 2024 dollars. It's not 2028 dollars or 2027 dollars. You know, should escalation be factored in at 3% that we used to use? That's not what the numbers are showing here in the last five years. It's more like 10% a year or even more. So this is the graph that I was referring to. This is just one index. This is a producer price index, but if you looked at the construction cost index, you would see the same rise, 40% increase since 2020 from COVID hit. Again, it's not unique to North Carolina, it's not unique to Monroe, we're seeing this throughout the country. We're also, we're seeing, and was it, is it Brad way back there, electrical? No, your name's not Brad.
It's Rob.
Rob, I'm sorry, Rob. I appreciate what you said because again, we're seeing that across the country too as far as transformers, three years to get a transformer, two years to get MCCs. You know, same thing for VFDs, right? Branding, salt starters, whatever. We're competing, municipalities are competing against, against high-tech like Google and Meta for chilled, chilled water facilities. And they can write the check and they can get ahead of the line in front of us municipalities. I think that's one thing that's driving up electrical cost and, and really extending the, these delivery dates and so on. And, and time is money. If, if, if a contract is being extended because a contractor can't get equipment, well, you're paying the contractor to be on site is general overhead, okay? So there's a compounding effect. What we're also seeing is that there is a labor shortage, certainly in this area. And we'll show you some data here to kind of demonstrate that. Anyway, questions on that? Does that all make sense? Is that anything new to you all? I know I'm just a plethora of good news. Okay. So let me just give you some examples. These are really, really recent projects that Hazen has been involved in and I think these are all within the last three or four years. Your first, the first project is the Monroe Flow Equalization Basin. Our estimate was $4 million, came in at 5.2, just came online. Union County, your, your brother here in Union County, a little package treatment plant, 120,000 gallons per day. So rectangle, black box, $6 million. And I saw our estimate for that, I go, guys, it can't cost $6 million. And they said, you're right, it costs 10. That's over near Piedmont High School. Greenfield, South Carolina, we're involved with an owner's advisor on a C-MAR pipeline program where we are a designer and we're also overseeing the design of three other convenience projects. This is the first project that we designed. Our estimate was $20 million. We had a construction manager at risk because the client was concerned that they could not get enough bidders to bid on their work. So they went out and got a contractor, engaged him, and that price came in $29 million. Charlotte Water, this was at the Franklin Water Drink Plant. Scott, you're very, very familiar with that. $45 million, talking to our people, we thought that was high. We got two bidders, Sanders Utility, I forget who the other one was, $67 million. And they're not even a plant, they're a pipeline contractor doing plant work. Charlotte Water stole, we did the initial PBR and, and this, this is a little hulky, but, but Charlotte Water, 15 NGD new Greenfield wastewater treatment plant. We did the evaluation, $220 million, that contract right now, two years after this, $305 million. Plus they're spending $125 million for a new influent pump station for their treatment facility, plus another $25 million by another consultant doing the solid handling. So all in all, it's $450 million for a 15 NGD plant. To the math, 450 divided by 15 is what? $30 a gallon. $30 a gallon times 3 NGD expansion is 90. That's not how we got that number, okay? But it all equates, is what I'm saying. Union County. Union County, we just, expanding their plan from what, seven and a half to nine MGD. We took bids in July, we got one bidder. Our estimate was forty-six. We opened bids yesterday. We got two bidders. One bid was sixty-three million, and thank God, the low bid was only fifty million. And again, that's going from seven and a half to nine, okay? And then last but not least, what is this? This is the bio solids project, which we're really concerned about. It's a new thermal prior, de-watering facility. I know that quite doesn't mean anything, but it's an eighty million dollar project. We're not sure if we're even going to find a bidder. We've talked to all the local and regional general contractors here, and everybody is out of capacity. That's the scary thing. And it's scary because now you might have people coming from out of state that may not be the best reputations that you may not want, right? At least for listener tickers out. I think we're going to be okay with scheduling this project because we're still a couple of years away, or at least a year away. Again, more good news, right? Sorry. Project schedule, so we got the notes received to start designing in, in August. Thirty percent in May. We're somewhere in that almost sixty percent range, thirty to sixty percent range now. Or actually, could be more in December. But we are on schedule to be a hundred percent complete by June of twenty twenty-five. Advertised bid opening in August, basically a year from now. And hopefully have a contractor, under contract by November. I think this January twenty twenty-nine is a year too long. I think it's more of a thirty to thirty-six month project now that we don't have the inflow pump station. So I don't think it's as long as what we were showing right here now, but that's where we're at right now. Questions? Think about that, Scott. Sure. This one?
Lisa, we, we would be looking at going to markets sometime, obviously, twenty-five. At sometime the fourth layer and the first year.
With an August bid opening, we would need LGC approval in September. If it slips, and anyway, even late August, they push us to an October approval, which we can still do. But if it slips and we don't get bids in until September, late September, we'd have to hit a November LGC meeting, which would mean having to have our annual financial report by September tenth is the deadline. We have no physical way of doing that. We don't have the staff to pull that off. So then we'd have to delay it so that we could go to the LGC in December.
And, and, and you guys can control the schedule. This is just something that, you know, typically, we would see. You know, once you, once you finish up with design, you usually have like a three-month period for advertising and opening bids and getting someone in contract. But this, this is totally wild.
So even, even LGC in December, I mean, you're, you're into late January bidding where you want to market?
They could go to market, I think, right after the LGC approval. I don't think there's that much of a gap in time.
So what, what is, in your opinion, about timing of that going to market in January? Is there pro cons?
In, in the environment that we're in, I'm seeing interest rates continue to go down over time. And as time goes out, you know, whether that'll happen or not, you know, we all have like that crystal ball, but I guess I've done, did like Christmas, around Christmas time deals. And it, I don't know that it's been any more favorable than any other time, but you know, we certainly can, can do that. That might be better so that we don't get caught, you know, with the bids and just the timing, get off or something and, and not be able to meet the deadlines.
What, what questions do you all have about this project, the timing of it?
When we represent, we simply talk about this.
A year, a year, a year from this.
Well, you got to have a hundred percent design by next year. That's, so you design, and then you're into, you're into late summer with bid opening, so.
I guess his question was, can you, can you, can your design process be expedited in September?
To expedite the design, bid in December? I'm looking at my guys.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't think it'd be appreciable.
Can you, what do you think, Mike? Could the design get expedited? And, and your reason for that? You're thinking you might have better rate rates or the bidding climate might be?
Part of it is, obviously, over time, I think that our concern is over time. Prices, yeah. It becomes certain, seems to be a steady price, like the price just keeps rising up. And so the faster we can start processing, bidding, brand, building, it obviously, you have something more locked in.
In August of twenty twenty-three, it was ninety-nine million dollars cost estimate. May of twenty twenty-four, it's a hundred and forty million dollars. So I mean, and I would assume that this is not going to be, no matter what the estimate is, it's going to be ninety, what is it? It's, it's probably, yeah, it's, it's not going to be ninety-five to a hundred million dollars. It's going to be more than that. It's going to cost us more because everything on that screen is almost a third more than what the actual thought, you know, the estimate was. So no matter what, it's, it's not going to cost ninety-five to a hundred million dollars.
Or, or are you, or are you calculating that, that price fluctuation inside of that number of ninety to a hundred million?
We haven't really tried to build that into our cost estimates because of, we, to some extent, we're guessing ad inflation. Once we start trying to build that in. So we're trying to estimate true to.
Absolutely. And like I said, I'm sure that's what was being done with those estimates up there as well, so.
I, I would say, I think we were a little conservative in that one forty number. I don't think we were that far out.
No.
Okay.
Getting it down to the number that it is now is, is fantastic, but I would anticipate it would be, that's not going to be the actual, right?
You know, one, one thing that we did, you know, when, when you, when you start the process, you've always got to think the end in mind. So you, you lay it out to what it's supposed to look like fifty years from now, so you don't paint yourself in a corner. And we laid it out for a twenty, twenty-four year facility. We hand-strung ourselves a little bit, thinking that we could build there in those basins. But it's actually cheaper thirty, forty years from now to buy some land adjacent to the treatment plant and maybe put EQ there. And now we can put basins there where it's already excavated and the piping longer is shorter. So I think that was part of it too. We had a lot of grading. We had a lot of piping. We, we know there's rock, or this is, this is Union County, right? So this, this new layout lends itself better.
The, the construction, what you're seeing in blue is closer in with the existing plant. We're not pushing the contractor out further into that hill that Jim mentioned. So definitely a more focused project. More of this value engineering, that was a big part of it, was, was really bringing it more in and trying to limit that grading and electrical work and piping.
And then also that would reduce the cost?
Yeah, yes. That definitely contributes to that reduction from, I guess, a hundred and forty million to a hundred. But then again, also defer in the inflow pump station. So it was a major facility that's being deferred, just, just to defer cost into the future.
And obviously, everyone here can speak, but I think everyone is saying, since we started talking, material costs have gone up. So let's go ahead and see, get something going and locked in. And get your guarantee that it won't go over ninety-nine. Personal guarantees.
I'll have to throw a bomb at them for that.
But seriously, I think, I think that's what the consensus is, is the can, there's no more road to kick the can out.
When you look at the number of residents, it's like we had, we, we don't have a choice. No, this is not, this is better.
What's on, what's on the books right now is covered in terms of lots, but nothing beyond that. And if you have that, industry that comes in that happens to be in heavy water.
That's a problem too, if you're, if you're making that.
Yeah.
What you want to do is have. Industry or whatever.
Yeah.
So it's a choice.
Any other, any other questions about the process thus far and, and how Hazen and our staff have worked together to get to this, what I'll, I'll call by term, a value engineer solution at this point.
I think it looks good. You obviously do a good job. People will be using you. But you brought up a good point in your, in your little dissertation there about that you can just acquire land in thirty years, but we can barely acquire land now. So if there's more land to acquire, there's something else to be thinking about. You know, you're saying it would save money, but again, you're leading adjacent property, so.
There, there had been talk, and I don't know if I should bring it up or not, Scott, but there had been talk about this land order right here to the top east north, right to the east of acquiring that.
We have, we have talked about that in just the recent months, but it, with the escalating cost of the plant, you know, what comes first? You know, the immediate need or?
The future need.
Seventy thousand dollars an acre.
Seventy eight thousand an acre is the average.
I wish we got that vice in Iowa for farming in the world, so, from Iowa, so.
While, while we're at this point, I just want to say thank you to Rich and to Amy and your, the rest, your staff that assisted in looking at these plans and, and really trying to get this number down to what we see today. Thank you, thank you so much for going to that.
And, and can I just say one other thing too, for my, Mr. Mancher, is that we didn't compromise the process, okay? We, we are designing these things, looking at it, knowing that nutrient requirements are coming to Union County, where you're going to have to remove nitrogen, remove phosphorus, or build these basins bigger. We're not putting the equipment in, but when that time comes, we can drop that equipment in and you can go with a five-stage treatment and you can remove nitrogen, you remove phosphorus. So we're, we're not painting you in a corner. We're also providing flexibility for, for Kyle so that if one of these basins goes down, we can actually bypass around it so we can change out membranes. And what's really, really important here is that this additional treatment train will allow staff to do some of the maintenance on their existing plant, to take basins out of service, to replace membranes, to replace, just general maintenance that they can't do now because they don't have the capacity. They can't afford to take it down, at least for extended periods of time, to do what they need to do.
Counsel, I don't want to put you on the spot, and I don't want to push you into, into your decision, but is it, is there consensus on counsel for staff to proceed with sixty percent design to proceed to a hundred percent design and, and bid the project?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. So come on, Richard.
Okay. All right. And as I stated earlier this morning, you know, that'll get us to that, that point, and when we have the bid number and that will actually come back to you, you will have other decisions to make at that time. Any other, any other, Scott, is there anything else related to the plant itself that other than proceed to a hundred percent design and bid the project?
Not, no, sir, not at this time. So there's no other, nothing else as far as the plan is concerned.
Okay. And, and the, the next thing I would like to ask counsel, counsel's direction on, or get direction from counsel on, is we have an informal letter from the Union County Public Works Director stating that the county would like to participate in the project, but we do not have a formal commitment or formal letter from the Union County Board of Commissioners stating that they will participate in the project. We have a letter from a director that says they would like to participate in the project, but we don't have a commitment. Letter from the county stating that they will, or they want to participate in the, in the project. And I understand that there may be some, or Richard, there may be some confusion or maybe some questions about the inter-local agreement, what it calls for and doesn't call for, things like that, but I, I would recommend to, that, that counsel engage the board of county commissioners to determine their, their level of commitment in this project because that will impact our rates to our customers and our finances.
Do I have another meeting this month?
How about?
Do I have another meeting this month? I can't, but.
Do you have another meeting this month?
Do the county commissioners have another meeting this month?
Monday.
It might be this coming, it might be this coming.
Or how about the formal letter?
Yeah, the letter.
The, the letter you can ask for, the, we've gotten the, the letter from the county from their Water Resources Director.
It was clearly written by like, something from the commissioners by the very end.
Would, well then, would it be, would kind of counsel like for the city attorney to draft a correspondence on its behalf, or the mayor's signature to the county? Requesting. Requesting, making a request.
Information. Yeah, like a formal request by his.
Actually, I actually kind of, it's, they got to give us a couple people to talk to, and we're going to have a couple people to talk to. Like that's almost that, that, of course, because I don't think it's been presented to the commission.
Are you suggesting?
That's my, that, that's my.
It has not been presented. Are you suggesting potentially a meeting or someone like yourself, Richard, or someone else to go to their meeting and present?
I actually think that we need to put some behinds and seats and have a formal, have a discussion with, whether it's a couple of them, a couple of us.
Okay. How about then a formal, just a formal, request a meeting? Okay.
I would say that between the city attorney and the mayor and the council, y'all need to come up with, with that correspondence and send that to the county commissioners.
A, a formal correspondence to request help.
Because, because we asked for a response, I'm not sure they'll get it from front of it and after the main reply. We just, we need a commitment. That's what we were trying to go.
If I have that letter, then we'll sign it. To the, to the county commissioners.
Right, right. County commissioners requesting a formal meeting in October.
County commissioners requesting a formal meeting in October.
As soon as possible.
And I think one of the, one of the outcomes of, that potential outcomes of that meeting is clarification for the county based on some information that was just given that, that our current plant will not, if, if it comes offline average, it will not come offline before 2050. And, and that is contrary to information that the county understood four or five years ago.
So, that's a important.
That's very important. That's very important. It was presented as more of a, the plant is going to be replaced with a new plant.
By the end of this decade.
So, that, just, they need to have a clear understanding that this plant that they own part of is not going away until after mid-century.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's, that was a huge thing that I took away from what you just said.
And Mr. Watson, through the agreement, they have an allocated capacity as far as no ownership in the specific facility.
Say that one more time?
They, they have no ownership in the facility, they just have, through the agreement, allocated capacity of 2.65 million gallons.
Thank you, Scott, that was my, poor choice of wording.
Which their current allocated capacity is 24, 24 point, basically just under 25% allocated capacity in the facility right now.
Okay.
They wanted, I'm sorry?
How much are they using of that?
About one and a half million on average per day of give or take, wet weather flow. They have an instantaneous arrival rate of up to lower of six million. That's for instantaneous inflow infiltration rate. Now, the daily, their daily allocated capacity is 2.65. The new plant expansion, they are requesting 700,000 gallons of the three million gallons of an expanded capacity, which equates to about 23.33% of the new three million gallons. So, that would be allocation in the new three million ga, the new three million gallon expansion. So, that's what they're requesting right now, is 23.33%.
All of the, all of the costs associated with that is paid by them?
Yes.
But they have not agreed to it, right?
That's right.
So, if they haven't agreed to it, then we don't have to allot those gallons?
That's correct. The, the formal agreement has, both governing bodies have, nothing's been amended to.
That's why it's critical that this question be asked, Mancher.
Right, the commitment part and the, and the interlocal agreement.
That's, that's correct, so, that's correct, yes. So, the additional flow utilization basin we just constructed, just brought online, they, they designed and assisted us with that project. For instance, right now, because of their current capacity of their 24.48% allocation in the existing capacity of the existing plant, they will, they are going to reimburse us for that $5 million project, 24.48% of that. Any, for the design, for instance, once they, they decide to come to the table and agree and enter into getting additional capacity of the new three million gallon expansion, they would also be obligated to potentially reimburse us 23.33% of the, the cost of the new design for the expansion and construction.
So, this new, this new facility, the $500, when did it go in service?
Just last month.
Last month. But, so you haven't invoiced them to their portion?
No, sir, we're still getting, we're working at the final number with the contractor who completed the construction for us, so we're wrapping up the final cost, total cost of the project. Then I will include that on our annual trua with Union County, and they want it to be invoiced for the total amount that they own the project. It's about 1.4 million.
Is there a sunset to their interlocal agreement?
No.
1.6 million?
No.
I think it's.
It is a long-term agreement and it is not really that well-written, guys, that's, that's the reason. There's a, there's a difference in interpretation regarding allocation and ownership. That, that's, that's really the, the crux of their, of the issue. Yes.
So, Scott, so basically, if they don't come into it, then we're, if, if they do come into it out of this, what is it, 100, 120 million, say?
If it's overrun, and you imagine it's going to be about 120 million asking to build this thing, it's a.
Then they would cover roughly $20 million.
About 24% though?
Yeah, 23.33% of that, whatever that costs.
So, if not, we would have to cover another 24 million.
That's correct. And then at some point, as the east end, the east end of the county, the east, eastern side of the county continues to grow and expand over time, they'll need that capacity.
They'll have to come to us.
At some point, yes, sir. And then by that time, it would have been shrugged, we would have carried the debt.
So, we would charge them accordingly for that. In other words, if they get in at this point, it would be less for them than if they wait until we've carried this entire thing.
Potentially so, yes.
So, it would, it would financially.
That's, that's going to be a maybe, maybe not, guys, I'm just, don't, don't, don't put, don't write that in stone in your mind. Regardless of what we do with the agreement, one thing I can tell you, regulatory wise, that would not be allowed is we would not be able to shut off that flood port.
Look, and, but if, if we're not shutting off the old plant until the middle, I mean, 15, 20 years from now, right?
Yes, that's right. That's correct.
They will always have their, their capacity at that point.
At, at that point.
Right.
That's correct. And so, though. And they, they necessarily do not interpret that as we.
Well, I guess we'll deal with it.
I know that for a fact. It's been, it's been in place for seven decades now. And just, just so you know, I mean, I work well with their staff, we communicate, because we work together.
That's right.
You know, at the end of the day, we serve the public council.
That's right.
So, so moving, moving, so are there any other questions for Hazen or staff related to this project?
You've got work to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
That kind of brings us a little circle back to the presentation on rates. So, so having, having made the decision to move forward with the, with the plant design and, and with bidding, that would, that would assume that we're going to build a plant. We've seen, we've seen the numbers. You've seen the numbers related to the system development fees and the timeline. If we, we, you would have to approve starting that process, and then we would have to give the, the notices, all that notice, contingent upon Union County participation. So, really, the participation by the county is the next thing that has to be answered because you don't know whether that's going to be an 8%?
Or 10.
Or 10?
Well, can we, I'm sorry. Can we, can we move forward as far as the rate structure is concerned, choosing an option, and if it ends up being 8% waterfall, if it ends up being 10%, it is what it is?
I think so.
We'll wait and see what happens there, but we can make a decision.
Do I hear consensus then, at that point?
Or is this a vote?
This is a vote. On the rate structure?
Yes.
There were, there were, I believe, three different options.
Mr. Watson?
Mr. Watson?
I have enough.
Okay.
It's option three.
Option three.
Yes.
Tiered, tiered rate structures?
Yep.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion for the rate study key decision point for the rate structure?
Before you make that motion, you've got two council members that are absent, the question that was here earlier. I understand, but we don't have votes by proxy. And so, what the question would be is, are you going to excuse her from voting, or are you going to, or is it going to be because she is part of a quorum, and her vote was yes?
She was going.
Okay, I'm just, and.
Do we need to excuse her?
And, yeah, and Councilman Anderson is able to do that, so.
How many commissions did we use? Councilman Harrison?
I have a motion to second, those in favor, if you can raise your hand. Now you can make a motion.
I made a motion that we pass the tiered rate structure for water only, option number three, to be the set rate.
I have a motion to second, those in favor, if you can raise your hand. My partner, did you have, did you catch the motion?
Yes.
This was, this was.
Option three.
Okay.
Is it? Option four, no, it's, but option three.
It's tiered regardless.
So, you need to answer the second question, sir? Or is that again on the decision?
I think it, the question, the question concerning system development fees cannot be answered until, you know, what the county participates on this.
Mr. Watson, now, the system development fee, we're the ones that are carrying the burden of the debt, so, in my opinion, it's, it's irrelevant whether they participate or not, in my opinion. I defer that to at least a strict one as well. System development fee driving factor is potentially whether or not we build a plant, and we carry the sole burden of all that debt, and then they will just reimburse us through payments, however they want to be.
Correct. Yeah, that's, they would reimburse us. I think the amount was like at $2 million a year.
That's correct.
With their portion of the plant. And, yeah, the system development fees, I don't know, what was your question on that?
Can we go back to the system development fee page?
I've captured some of the information on this slide deck here. So.
Okay, gotcha.
This under proposed overall increase of $1,789, the sewer system development fee will increase by 66% to $5,068. That right there, that system development fee, we are carrying that debt solely, whether they reimburse us or not, so.
We have to do.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
So, this would be a motion to adopt.
Basically, this slide.
Yes.
Why make a motion to adopt proposed overall increase in the system development fees? Is that how you're going to do that?
Not at this time.
Or you just want a consensus?
No. Remember, the data that she presented must be posted on the website for system development fees for 45 days.
So, you need a consensus to move forward?
Yes, just a general consensus.
And then I have a question on the proceedings slide, second question. Do we need to answer the last question that, the rate structure become effective?
That's, that's correct. I had mentioned to Mr. Watson, Mayor Watson, that Raffaelis had mentioned we did not need to do a mid-year rate increase, they thought we were fine with 5%, and we did. That became effective July 1 this year, was adequate, and so, they recommended that the rate increase or the rate structure would not necessarily need to become effective until potentially July 1 of next fiscal year. But, but council drives that decision.
I, I would just say that, you know, you, you saw the costs and how the costs are increasing. The sooner you can start collecting that, the better, and so, it will be less that you're having to fund through the market. So, my recommendation would be January, January 1st, and that, that gives us several months in order to make those public notices, et cetera.
You've modified the original motion, you're just making a motion to make it effective?
That motion would die, so make a new motion. Let's make it.
For the rate structure.
That's what I'm saying, just, we're just trying to find the original motion, I guess.
So, your.
January 1st. For a tiered structure, not on the 10 or 8%.
That's the option number four.
I get option number three.
Okay. And it become effective.
Okay, so make a motion, because we've never voted on it.
Okay. So, I make a motion that we set the rate structure for the tiered rate for water only become effective January 1st of 2025.
Motion to second, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott, I thought you will, please make sure that all the appropriate notices on the website are done and that appropriate places are signed out.
Yes.
Will we also put notices in our power bills?
Utility bills? We can't put that in our, are in the utility bills.
Yes, we can put it in the bill or on the bill.
Please, please work with Scott on getting that, getting that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two more slides on critical decision points, if you want to go through.
Yes.
Yes.
So, just, this is just summarizing some of the information that was presented today. Systematic flow monitoring program, obviously, we're using, utilizing flow leaders to quantify and locate inflow infiltration, documentation of those inflow infiltration reduction efforts as the program is implemented, developing a long-term sewer assessment rehabilitation cost. The projected cost to reduce inflow infiltration, our current annual funding for sewer rehabilitation is $500,000 in an annual revolving account that accrues over time. Projected budget, based on what CHA had provided today, is between two to two and a half million annually. Projected projections are minimal, expeditious reduction requires increased funding. Projected cost for the 18-inch pipeline rehab on the golf course obtained, we're still obtaining additional quotes for approximately the 2,200 liter feet of 18-inch pipeline mental rehab, were estimated the cost would be around $450,000 to $500,000, we've covered that information already. Current funding is available to do this job at this time. To begin, potentially in January, will last four to five weeks, we've covered some of that, there's a four to six week lead time for materials to arrive, and we know that this work will affect the golf course. Can additional funding be appropriated to reduce the inflow infiltration? That's one key question.
So, my recommendation to the council is that, that we continue our systematic flow monitoring program as it has been presented, and that will go forward annually, it will be reassessed annually, and the cost of that will be covered in the recommended budgets from year to year. The projected cost, cost for the, the pipeline, I do believe that project needs to go forward, and as those bids are received and a bidder is selected, that contract will come back to council and will prove.
Does need to be separate motions.
I think there's any action necessary at this time.
Not consensus.
Those are my limitations.
Consensus.
It's all consensus.
Yes.
And, and the second one, do we write?
I'll come back to you for finally. That'll come back to you for finally.
And then, just, just the last slide was current capacity at the waste water plant is 10.4 million gallons or 92.5% when I was on parcels are considered. We're at 78% permitted flow for parcels currently under construction, but the flow is not yet tributary. Meaning those, those houses have not yet come online. Currently designing three million gallon expansion, again, cost will be between 95, 100 million. Utilizing vacuum engine practices, will be at 60% completed design approximately in December. Will be at 100% completed design in, in June and advertised for bids. Bid opening is in August of 2025. Council approval on November 25, construction in January 2026. Council direction was needed and obviously we've committed this, do we engage in further discussions with Union County for participation? And we, we've already covered the story. Yep.
Okay.
And last slide was any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the time today.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, uh, from Hazen for your presentation today. Uh, city council, that, that wraps up all of the presentations and the decision points, um, for council today. However, um, we have time left in this afternoon for any, um, council discussion that you would like to have. If there are items you want to bring to staff's attention, items you want to see, uh, staff, um, work on in the near future, et cetera, whatever, whatever the council pleasure is, we're discussing at this time. And Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over.
Counsel, uh, do you think, after all this information that we've gotten, that you would like to address, uh, at this time? Do you still have time tomorrow as well if you want to sit on some of these things?
It's been a very productive day.
Okay, um, we can, well, anything else, I guess, uh, overnight that you guys can think of? We will have an open discussion, a little more tomorrow, including the things that we just came up to, kind of look at that. So I will start by going around the table with Councilman Carr and the others.
This has been incredibly productive and I, I was going to bring up was regarding, uh, our downtown historic designations and I understand that's actually going on right now as we speak, that they're meeting with people downtown and tomorrow. So the unified designation of historic buildings and running any of the facilities that they ask of your, um, so that question will have an answer, I'm soon, I'm, I'm soon, very soon. Were we going to talk to you about streets down?
Streets, streets is on and parking.
Thank you.
I'll just say at the end, it's been a very productive day and I appreciate all, everyone's hard work and attendance and for sending all of this out and giving information to us.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo, uh, what's already been said. Uh, thank you staff for all your hard work and the countless hours of preparation. Uh, and I think we have the best city staff in the country. Uh, you guys are always on point, you do a good job, very thorough and I appreciate your, your dedication and your, your commitment to our city. Uh, with that being said, very, very productive day. Time for home.
This is probably earliest everyone would be getting off in one month, right? Seriously, thank you all. Thank you, everyone who spoke, who presented. It's very encouraging to see the future of Illinois starting to play out. So Lisa, Virgin, Sherry, thank you guys. Seriously. And all the people.
Benji's waiting.
Yes, Benji, Lisa, her team. Man, I would rather name him. The, uh, catering, everything's been great. So we'll see y'all tomorrow.
Seven thirty break?
Seven thirty breakfast, all the time, you're the first one. Yep, motion to return? Hey, motion, second, those in favor? Thank y'all.